Vice President Barr will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Good evening and welcome to the August 23rd study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,928th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, September 8th, 2021. And again, just a reminder, that meeting will take place on a Wednesday night because Monday, September 6th, is Labor Day. We have all members of the council with us tonight. Does anyone have any announcements that they would like to make? I have just one, and I meant to mention it in the regular meeting, we had a lot of things to discuss. As many Livonia residents know, Livonia was without power, sections of Livonia were without power for a long period of time. And I have asked the administration, who was already in the process of doing that, to get with DTE to understand what is causing these outages. And there was a large, there were a lot of people out, but there have been states that have been, had almost statewide outages, and power was restored as quickly, if not more quickly, than we had in this region. So we will be getting information from DT and sharing that with the residents. Does anyone else have any announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move ahead. This meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include approving, denying, or referring resolution to committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be placed, be received and filed from the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Wednesday, September 8th, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please approach one of the podiums on either side of the room when the item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. So please come to the podium when the item is called, and you'll be recognized when it's appropriate for you to speak. When you reach the podium and are recognized, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let the television audience and the council members know who is speaking to them. And with that, we begin with new business with item number one, and that is a block party request. This comes to us from Sarah Domingo to be held on Saturday, October 16th, 2021, from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Grove Street, from Pollyanna Street to Surrey Street with a rain date of Sunday, October 17th, 2021. Good evening.
Hi.
And you are?
I am Sarah Domingo.
Okay, and you would like to have this block party?
Yes.
All right.
Madam President.
Councilmember McCullough.
Sorry, the only reason I jump is this is my neighborhood, and these are some awesome people. Seeing them here, I'd be more than happy to offer an approving for consent. Especially if you guys are both putting this on, I know it's going to be a good time. I just hope to gain an invite.
Yes, definitely.
All right.
Chair, I think they deserve approval just for waiting for an hour for their.
Absolutely. Thank you for your patience this evening.
No problem.
That's a non-veto letter.
All right.
Or a restraining order from Mr. McCullough.
There you go.
That changes daily. Right now, I think I'm okay.
And having approval on consent means that you don't need to come back to the meeting on Wednesday, September 8th. So enjoy your party, and thank you for being engaged, residents and obviously great neighbors.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item number two is a request to approve and recognize the Madonna University Homecoming Parade Parade Route and the closing of certain city streets, and requests to designate and authorize Senior Police Officer Michael Arkilian to sign the Wayne County Road Commission permit on behalf of the city to close a portion of Levan Schoolcraft and Newburg Roads, with the city to assume liability for any damage claims which may arise as a result of the road closure. This comes to us from Katie Alexander, CMP Madonna University, to be held on Saturday, September 25th, beginning at 11:30 a.m. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Katie Alexander. I'm with Madonna University, and we're at 36600 Schoolcraft, and I'm the Director of Special Events.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Toy Donavich. If I may, the petitioner, is this your first one?
This is our first ever, we're not, we're calling it more of a caravan rather than a parade. It's not a parade in a traditional sense where there's bands and floats. It's more of cars. So it's not our first homecoming, but it is our first caravan for homecoming.
Oh, okay, alrighty. And how many people do you expect?
In the caravan, we're hoping between 100 and 200 cars. But we don't know, this is the first time we've ever done it, and with COVID, we're not quite sure the participation comfortability and level that people would want to participate in.
Well, great, well, good. Well, I'll let my other colleagues speak, but I see nothing wrong with it. I'll offer an approving and wish you much success on your first one, and hopefully there'll be many more.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for coming tonight. One of my questions was who can participate? Can residents sign up and participate? Is this for students, just for faculty?
It's really more for our alumni and our guests. I mean, our faculty and our staff can participate as well. We're still trying to figure out what we're doing with our students, whether we shuttle them over or if they drive. So if we do have residents that want to get involved, we're more than happy to have the community, but it's more for our alumni.
Okay, and then my next question, I'm assuming it might be for Mr. Bernier, if that's okay with Madam President? In the agenda, it talks about with the city to assume liability for any damage claims which may arise as a result of the road closure. Is this normal that the city takes liability for something that a private organization or school, et cetera, will be hosting and kind of facilitating?
This is not uncommon for us to take the liability when we're closing the roads and we're involved in it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bernier. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So this Saturday, Lawrence Tech is going to beat Madonna in football. And if that doesn't happen, no, I'm just joking. No, we're excited, we're excited. I work at Lawrence Tech.
I can tell you had some affiliation.
No, I'm really excited for your school and for our school, and I'm hoping that we can be a great collaborative team and a local rival for one another. So it's really exciting. I know last year, I think our game got canceled at the last minute. That's exciting, and I wish you all the best of luck, and I don't, you know, I'm a little torn, but I hope it's a good game, and I think it's great for both of our communities.
I think it's good for the community, for both schools.
Right.
Where's the game at?
Thank you.
The game is going to be at Lawrence Tech this year.
It is, and so we're, it's bringing it back to campus next year, and we're hoping to make it a tradition. It's the first game of the season between those two schools.
Right, I think it sounds good. But good luck with the parade. I think it's great, and you guys are doing a lot of cool things at Madonna.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember McCullough.
I don't have anything, other than I'll just share.
Madam Chair.
Go Blue Devils.
Do they have any kind of little trophy or anything on these rivals?
I don't know, I would not be.
You know, like you have Sparty, and we have a Wolverine, and you know, that kind of stuff.
I don't know. Would you like to refer that to committee of the.
Yeah, let's go to committee of the whole.
We can all be Crusaders, we're in Livonia.
There you go.
Oh.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. What's wrong, Jim?
I was trying to think of how best to make a joke that you're the Crusaders and we're the Blue Devils. It's kind of like a, but.
We're going to win. We champion overall.
You might have some, yeah.
All right. Councilmember Toy, did you want that on consent?
Yeah, please, would you?
Okay, does anybody object? All right, well, thank you very much, Katie, and we're excited about the parade.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Item number three, excuse me, before I go to item number three, I neglected to go to the audience for our audience communication. If there's anyone in the audience who would wish to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, seeing none, we will go to item number three, and thank you, Mr. Bernier, for pointing out, which I think is, if we're keeping score, my 31st mistake of the evening. Number three, request for approval of the 2021 through 2026 Consolidated Plan. This is the 2021 through 2022 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Plan and Budget, and request to approve hold harmless contracts between the City of Livonia and First Step, Fair Housing Center of Metropolitan Detroit, Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, Cruz Clinic, Higera Programs Incorporated, Stonemore Counseling Associates, PLCC, and the Collaborative Health Center. This comes to us from Livonia Housing Commission in connection with the operation of a domestic violence victim assistance program for the purpose of providing fair housing and for the mental health counseling program provided for through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program for the 2021 through 2022 program year. Ms. Isaacson.
Well, that's a mouthful. Yes, I'm just here to request approval of our 2021 through 2026 Consolidated Plan. The purpose of our consolidated plan is to identify programming needs within our community to assist those who are low to moderate income, any type of light rehabilitation in our neighborhoods, or to address an urgent need. In addition to that, our annual action plan actually just identifies programs or activities that we're going to be performing over the next year. And to give you some ideas of the programs that this Community Development Block Grant funding provides are major home improvement loan, minor home grants, fair housing oversight, mental health counseling, transportation needs for our seniors, utility assistance, neighborhood revitalization. So we're currently partnering with Parks and Recs to provide pathways to make our parks ADA accessible. There's so many programs. Home Buyer Assistance Program. So with this, we just ask for approval to continue to provide our community with these services.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Ms. Isaacson. Brandy, I'm familiar with the Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency, Cruz Clinic, Higera Programs. Is Stonemore Counseling and the Collaborative Health Center, are those new for us, or are they?
Stonemore has been on our list for a few years. The Collaborative Mental Health Group is new.
Is new, okay, thank you. I'll offer approving on consent if there's no objection.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, and before you, I think that's your only item, right?
My only item.
Before you leave the podium, I'd just like to say that I saw your predecessor. I ran into him in East Lansing yesterday, and he, it was nice to see him, that's Jim Ingalls, and I told him that you were doing a fabulous job.
Must have been at State.
I was, but it's kind of funny, but anyway, so passed along his hellos to everyone, and he knew that, I told him, you know, you had big shoes to fill, but you were doing outstanding job, so.
Thank you.
Best regards from your predecessor. All right, item number four is a request for authorization to waive the sealed bid process and accept the proposal. This comes from the Department of Parks and Recreation for the replacement of the bungalow roof at Greenmead Historical Park from budget funds. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Council President Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We are asking that council waive the sealed bid process. We did post on mitten. We received one bid from Weather Seal Home Improvement for $43,000. We'd received a previous quote from Cedar Preservation Systems in the amount of $25,890. We're asking that council allow us to throw out, to reject the bid on mitten and go with the quote we received with Cedar Preservation Systems. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Councilmember Jolly first, and then Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Davis, I think I and my colleagues up here, and probably most people in our community are happy to see that we are putting money into rehabbing any of the structures at Greenmead to preserve their historical importance. So this is more of a strategy question as opposed to directly related to the cost of this project.
Okay.
So at this price, and with a warranty of 10 years on a structure such as this for cedar roofing shingles, I know it was discussed one time in the past, at least, if not multiple times, that we would possibly go in the direction of having a similar product that would preserve the look and the feel from a visual perspective of cedar shingles, but provide us a longer warranty, a better product probably, at potentially a much lower cost. So, and I know this is, it's kind of a hot button issue here, but was that explored in this process at all towards this particular contract, or no?
It was explored. We could not obtain approval for that product.
And who's the approving authority on that?
The Historic Preservation Commission would approve that.
But it was discussed?
It was discussed on multiple occasions.
Is there, I guess, and my question here is, obviously, I have nothing against cedar shingles and preserving the historical nature of these properties. I just, I don't know how we're ever going to keep our nose in our mouth above water in regards to getting any of these buildings shored up for the long term. If we have to spend $25,000 every time we need to do a roof, we're never going to catch up. It's just going to be, by the time we do two more buildings, this building's potentially going to need it again, and it's just going to be a spiraling of cost, right? And at the same time, we're going to be risking in the future the viability and the protection of these buildings. I mean, not looking for a comment really here, but I guess I'm a little disappointed that that's where we are with this. Because I would like to see us make some progress where we can do this and kind of have a roof that's going to be intact for potentially 30 years and move on to the next one and shore them up over the course of time, where we don't have to talk about roofs maybe in a decade or so. So I guess I'm not asking for a question any further here than what you've already provided an answer to, but.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jolly.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Did you offer?
I did not, and I don't know that I'm going to.
Okay, Vice President Barr.
Yeah, maybe I'm stepping into a hornet's nest here, but I just met Ted Miras. What, so you said the Historical Preservation Commission is the one that makes that call?
They're the approving body for any of our historic properties, anything that happens on the exteriors of any of those properties.
Okay, so I'm not making any proposals here or anything like that, I'm just asking a question. Do we have to follow that?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no way to overrule the Historical Preservation Commission? And I don't know enough about this to make a suggestion that we do. I'm just asking what the parameters are.
That is correct. Council does not have the authority to overrule the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, and, okay. I probably have some more questions about that, but I'll put them together, and I'll ask you some other time. That's what I need to know for tonight. Thanks.
Toy, and then Donavich.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Davis. I appreciate what you're going through. Only, I only relate it to my days at Schoolcraft College, where we used to spend exorbitant amount of money on food that students would use and, you know, in their culinary programs, which is supreme and superb and all that. But we'd spend a ton of money, and it was just part of the programming, it was part of the education, just like it's part of the history. Not that that should be always the thought there, but you can't overrun or overrule this preservation kind of venue or anything historical. Yet, we, I know you're working on a master plan, right?
We are.
So I think that's going to, will that help in the long run? I know Mr. Jolly's helping on that as well. Do you think that'll help with costs in the future, or?
Councilwoman Toy, that is an outstanding question.
Okay, and there's no answer to it at the moment?
I don't have that answer today for you, unfortunately.
That's okay, that's fair and honest. I appreciate that. But as you go through it, I empathize, because, you know, there's just some programs you lose on, and there's others you gain on. And we're not in the money-making business, thank goodness, although we need to pay our bills. With that said, Madam Chair, they need the money for the roof. I will offer the approving and take the hose on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toy.
I think Donavich, and then back to Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. To touch on Councilmember Jolly's point, I absolutely agree. I understand we want to preserve the historic feel of the buildings, but if there is a way to do that and get a long-term product or, you know, better return our investment long-term, I think we have an obligation to the community to strike that balance. So my question is, I understand that we can't overrule the Historic Preservation Commission from what we just talked about. If we end up offering and denying and don't approve the funds for this project, what happens? The project just dies and go back to the drawing board? You go back to the commission? How does that work? Is that a great question, too?
That's a good question. I, I don't know what would happen to this project. I mean, I, we have, we are trying on a lot of different levels to move the Historic Preservation Commission to see things in a little different light that allow us to be a little more flexible with the exteriors of some of these buildings. To preserve the look, certainly, and the feel without utilizing original material. And some of our arguments have been, on a lot of these structures, we've replaced roofs, we've replaced wood. There's nothing original left. There's not an original building when everything in it has been replaced at some point in time. Even if it utilizes the same material, it's not original anymore. I can tell you that that is a discussion we are continually having. It is certainly a discussion that we are having as part of our master planning process, and it is something that we will continue to do, to try to create the most value for the residents, right, out of these projects. It is not enjoyable for me to stand up here, you know, on a Monday night and ask for $25,000, almost $26,000 to replace a roof that has a 10-year warranty, knowing full well that in 10 years, if I'm still here, that I will be back up here asking again for additional funds to replace this roof again in 10 years. I mean, I do see the cyclical nature of it, and how, as Councilwoman Jolly said, we are never going to get ourselves truly out of this. But yet, here I am, asking for a roof to be replaced because quite simply, it needs to be replaced.
Yeah, Greenmead's an amazing asset. It's awesome to have that in our community, but at the same time, we have to look down the road, and how can we strike that balance to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck, and also preserving that historic nature of the area? I'll have some more questions, but I'll ask them another time. Thanks, Mr. Davis.
Vice President Barr.
How long has it been since this roof was last replaced?
I believe this one, I'm trying to off memory, it's probably been about 15 years.
Okay, you alluded to what I was thinking, just with the Greenmead Master Plan discussions that we've had of just how many, like you said, there's a lot of things that aren't original. I, I need to better understand than I, what, for some of my questions, I need to better understand some things related to the Historical Preservation Commission, but let me ask one more question, then I'm going to say what I'm going to do. It's been 15 years since we've done this. I know what needs done. Does the place fall apart if we wait a year?
Fall apart?
No, I obviously said that in an extreme sense, but what's the risk level of waiting a year to do this?
Obviously, you have leaks, and you're going to create more damage to the interior, and it's going to cost, it's just going to cost additional money when it's not done. I mean, the cost of materials will go up, the roof job will, next year will more than likely be more expensive than it is today. Plus, now we're going to have interior work that we're going to have to do as well.
So we have major leaks that have sprung in the.
I don't know, we have major leaks, but obviously, when you need a roof replaced and you go through a freeze-dath cycle, it's probably not going to be beneficial to it.
Knowing that we're in the middle of master planning discussions for Greenmead, I forget exactly what the timeline of that is, but it's less than 12 months from now. I'm going to offer a resolution to just go to committee and give us time for that to play out, and let's see if that can nudge us in a different direction, and I think that, I don't think it's a committee of the whole item, capital outlay and infrastructure, probably. I'll offer for capital outlay and infrastructure committee that's chaired by Councilwoman White, vice chaired by Councilwoman Jolly, who's chairing the Master Planning Commission, or Master Planning Committee. I'm on that committee as well, as well as this committee. I think that makes sense. So I'm going to offer that resolution for this.
Councilman Barr, if I could.
Yes.
And I do understand the reasoning behind that, and if we were talking about a pathway or a new structure, restrooms, I would 100% agree that it should be delayed as part of the overall master plan. But I really do think this needs to be viewed through a different lens. This isn't, we're not creating a new structure, we're not updating a structure, we're not changing the fundamentals of the site at all. We're simply replacing a roof. Now, is it the materials that we would necessarily hope for right now? No, but that doesn't mean that we've given up on pointing out and showing new materials, and new materials are always introduced. So a composite cedar shingle or cedar shake that today might be unacceptable to the Historic Preservation Commission, there's always new designs coming out, and we're hopeful that we will simply find one that will work with them for a future project. This is, again, not, this is not changing the building in any way. It's not going to change our master planning process in any way. It's simply a roof replacement. So while I do, I don't disagree at all.
I just know that part of that master planning discussion has included.
Maintenance.
Well, maintenance, but also just to what, what is, we all want to hold to the integrity of what is historically accurate. But we've also had discussions that there's a practical nature that enters into that as well, of things that might not be perfectly historically accurate. We talked about gutters on the buildings, for example, that kind of thing. And so I'm just saying, as part of all those discussions, I'm wondering if the culmination of those discussions could inform what we do on this building, which is why I'm trying to buy a little bit of time. Maybe it's nothing. And I will offer that resolution, and fellow councilmembers, welcome to offer an approving that we can consider over the next two weeks. I'm not saying that that's the way I'm going to vote, but I recognize I don't have a historic house, okay? But I just replaced a roof last year. It has a 50-year warranty on it. It's really hard to get my head around a 10-year warranty, even for a historical building, so.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So I am hopeful that our interest in this subject matter will make its way back to other interested parties in regards to this. I think these are legitimate conversations, I mean, and they're all in the best interest of Greenmead in preserving this long-term beautiful asset we have in our community. We just all need to get on the same page in terms of how we're going to protect that for the long run. On a side note, I will offer, because I think the timing might be appropriate for this as well, I'll offer a resolution to submit the Greenmead Master Plan to the committee of the whole so that we can have that ready if and when we need to meet as a council to discuss the workings of the Greenmead Master Plan. And I would appreciate, because I'm chairing that committee, if I could collaborate, if and when the best time might be for the council president to call that forward, to work with our consultants and have them present to us. We are getting very close to a public rollout for the Greenmead Master Plan. Mr. McCullough, Mr. Barr, myself, and a lot of other people, Mr. Teramina, have spent a lot of time and effort in regards to this, and I think we're right on the very, you know, the verge of this going public for comments and for community outreach. So we should have that ready when necessary, without delay. Thank you.
So how does that affect the roof replacement timing?
It doesn't.
It doesn't, it's just.
So that's in addition?
It's a different motion, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that will go on, that will go on the regular meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Of next, okay. Yes, ma'am. All right, McCullough, then Donavich.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Davis. I'm kind of leaning on the side of Vice President Barr. I know I hate to defer, especially being in the role that I have as a career. Is there any chance, if you do have current issues at that structure, to spend a fraction of that money just to get us by? You know, I hate to, I hate to do that, but I think that the master plan looking to be tied up potentially before this year's end could give us a whole new direction. And, you know, you know as well as I do that the maintenance that has to go into these cedar shakes, it's even with a 10-year warranty, you've got, you know, your sealants that have to go, you've got your, you've got a lot of preventative maintenance that has to go into this as well. So that 24,000, you know, factor your general fund and expenditures per year, you're probably looking at another one to two to do the proper maintenance. I don't know, I just, I hate to defer that question. I mean, if you're saying, I trust the fact that if that roof is toast and we're going to have to replace it, I'm probably going to lean on trusting your decision on that, but I'm just itching for any way we can get by until we have more of direction for the overall.
I mean, we can always patch certain areas and get through. Uh, I don't know what that dollar figure is going to be, obviously. We'll have to, you know, talk with, uh, talk with vendors and see if we can come together with a, a specification and again, put that out to mitten, to try to get that bids on that.
You know, I, I think that the figure is, is not to have a tarp on the building. I mean, I think we're all in agreeance with that. We do not wanna do that. I don't know if it's prudent enough to have some kind of information, if it's possible, to even reach out to the vendor to see what it would cost to, to patch some areas. If you have to go out to mitten, you know.
That's what we have to do at this point.
Yeah, 'cause if you go out to mitten, you're looking at thirty days until that would be presented back to us, you're already lost for the season.
Depending on, depending on if it's over fifteen thousand dollars, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. In your experience, Mr. Davis, do you think that if the commission was more open to alternative materials that still preserved the look and nature, you'd have more vendors applying for the job? Because what you said earlier, we just have, essentially, there was one vendor really, which makes it really difficult to get the job done. Uh, whereas if we use an ulterior, alternative material, do you think we'd have more bidders? It's hard to say.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, um, Councilman Donovan, I don't know if the material we're using is what's limiting our, our vendors. There's only so many people, so many companies that do this sort of work on historic structures, kind of regardless of material. Whether it would be a, a Trex-type material or, or cedar, I don't know if that's what's our limiting factor. I mean, we did get one bid through mitten and we received a quote, and the company that quoted it quite honestly told us they didn't wanna deal with mitten and going through a government bid process. So that was, may, might be a limiting factor as well.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Madam President.
Vice President Burr.
In addition to the vote, um, resolution offered, I'll, I'll offer an approving as well. So we have both of us to consider in two weeks.
Councilwoman Toy.
Oh, she did. I didn't realize we had that. Okay, never mind then.
Could I, could I clarify what the three are? The three, we have an approving by Councilmember Toy, a refer by, uh, Cons, Council Vice President Scott Barr to which committee?
The law and infrastru, I'm not, sorry, the capital outlay and infrastructure committee.
Capital outline infrastructure, and then referral to the committee of the whole by Mr. Jolly for the Greenmead.
Master plan.
Okay.
But, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that that was in lieu of an approving or referring. I thought that was in addition to.
It's an additional.
I just wanna make sure, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, but you, that's an additional, okay. That's what I was trying to clarify. Okay, thank you.
I was, in hurtfully said that.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? All right. Well, you will have to come back and see us in two weeks, two and a half weeks, two weeks and two days.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ted. All right. Number five is a request to purchase one Transit van three fifty, DRW high roof, El Cargo van, usual, us, utilizing the state of Michigan and Macomb County Consortium bid pricing. This comes from the Public Service Division to replace a current van from budgeted funds. Hello again, Mr. Rushlow.
Hello. Good evening. Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works. Yes, the item before you here is a purchase of a new Ford Transit high roof cargo van. This will be used by the Building Maintenance Plumber for all tasks related to service maintenance at city facilities. It will replace one of our least reliable and most problematic vans in the Building Maintenance Fleet. That has become relatively unsafe to drive, um, and the repair costs would far exceed the value of that vehicle at this time. We will go through and dispose of that existing vehicle through the auction process. Uh, the new van would be outfitted with a, uh, workbench module, locking cabinets, storage shelves, and a power inverter, just to name a few of the major items that go into the upfitting of that vehicle. Budgeted funds were previously approved in the DPW capital outlay budget, and pricing for the vehicle was set through the state of Michigan and Macomb County contract. Uh, the upfitting pricing was set through the My Deal, um, program. So it's a recommendation of the department that council proceed to authorize the purchase of this Ford Transit high roof van, cargo van from Signature Ford in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, four dollars and authorize the upfitting of the truck by Versa Lift Midwest in the amount of fifteen thousand, two ninety-one.
Madam President.
Vice President Burr.
I'll offer this for approving, for consent. An approving for consent if there's no objection.
Seeing no objections, we'll place that on consent. Mr. Rushlow.
Thank you.
All right. Item number six is a request to amend the Livonia Code of Ordinance. This two comes us from the Department of Public Works to amend chapter thirteen point zero, zero, three, four, section zero, zero, three, zero, using water from fire hydrants, permit, cash deposit, and other conditions to increase the meter deposit from a hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars. Mr. Rushlow.
Yes, thank you again. Uh, in keeping up with rising water, um, and equipment costs, we found it necessary to increase these charges for outside usage of city fire hydrants. And as such, we must adopt revisions to the ordinance that define these charges. Hydrant usage is typically requested by construction companies and commercial landscapers uh, through a permit that includes a temporary meter and a backflow preventer to be connected to a hydrant. The hydrant water is often used when they're installing or replacing, uh, water pipes or sewer lines or things like masquerading or demolition, uh, when they need to do dust control. The increase in this deposit helps us ensure that the meter and the backflow preventer are returned to us and in good working condition. The customer does also pay the current, uh, rate for water and sewer usage, um, that's tracked through that meter. The water use, uh, charges are deducted from the deposit, and then any remaining balance is returned to the customer. At their August second, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Livonia Water and Sewer Board reviewed this request to update the ordinance and passed a resolution in support of this item. Um, as such, it's our recommendation through the Department of Public Works that council proceed to adopt revisions to Livonia Ordinance thirteen point zero four point zero three zero, specific to the deposit charge increase from one hundred to eight hundred dollars.
Madam Chair. Councilmember Donovan, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Question, I, I know, uh, growing up as a kid, I remember seeing, uh, fire hydrants open and the kids would be playing in the water and whatnot. Do, do we as a community do that? And if we do, uh, do they also have to pay the eight hundred dollar deposit fee?
So, so those events you remember from your childhood are what we call unauthorized, unaccounted-for water loss? There, we, uh, we do not, um, allow, uh, water meters to be rented for, for that type of use.
I just, I, maybe I have a odd memory of Laura Toy opening up hydrants like a long time ago and getting votes that way, so. That was a joke. That was a joke. Our water rates could have been two percent lower this year if that hadn't happened.
Thank you, Mr. Rushlow. That was a serious question, Alson. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, that's funny.
Councilmember White.
Madam Chair, I will offer an approving on cons, oh, wait, this is going to be an ordinance amendment, so I will have to go on the regular. But anyway, approving, please.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this? Councilwoman Toy? Okay. Request to extend, uh, ex, contract with EJ USA Incorporated. This comes to, to us from the Department of Public Works for the purchase of stormwater, water main, and sanitary manhole-related items in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for a one-year extension. This is council lose, council resolution one forty-nine dash twenty, and Mr. Rushlow, if I remember correctly, EJ USA is the old East Jordan Iron Works, still located in East Jordan, Michigan.
That is correct. Uh, thank you once again, Madam Chair. Yes, this is related to purchases of water main, sanitary sewer, and, and stormwater manhole-related iron castings, including fire hydrants, water main valves, and city logo manhole covers. And as you stated, these are all located, or locally manufactured here in Michigan, in East Jordan, and supplied solely by EJ USA. We did check pricing, and it's consistent with those paid by our neighboring communities for the same items. It does include, uh, a three to five percent increase over the previous year's pricing, depending on which, uh, components we're looking at. Their local distribution center is here in Oak Park. They've been very responsive in meeting the city's needs in the past and, um, get us our products as quick as possible.
Madam Chair. I would like to say that, um, they, they have been doing these covers forever, as long as I've been on council, and that's been a long time. And, um, I'm just gonna ask for an approving, 'cause they're a sole source provider, I believe, as well.
They are correct.
Yeah.
Of course.
Well, no, I, this is, I, I don't know why I always smile when I see this item come across, because it's, it's one of these unique little niches that there's only the one place that does it, and it's
Yeah.
in the middle of
Georgia.
Michigan, I mean, towards, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's, it's, I just, you know, at some point, am I wrong in thinking, did Councilwoman Toy, have you gone on a tour there or at some point?
Not yet. I hope to though.
I think, have you, or I, I think somebody said that they, at some point, they went on a tour there to see the facility, and it's quite interesting.
Glad you mentioned that, um, Chairperson Jolly. So they, they, they just built a new foundry adjacent to their old one. Um, there were a couple of years in there where they weren't able to provide tours. They do do them again, actually, I have to check that. I'm not sure if they're doing them yet. I know they were offering them before the COVID issues had started, perhaps here again, but yeah, they historically have offered tours of that foundry up there. Um, I haven't been to the new one. I was at the old one years ago. But I heard it's, uh, it's, it's quite the facility to, uh, check out.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I, that's one of those things I would like to do. Is that open to the public, do you know, or is that something we would have to arrangements beforehand to do?
I'm not sure, but I can certainly check with our, our rep and see how that works.
Yeah, if you would and pass that along, that'd be something worthwhile.
Certainly.
I'm sorry, yes.
Councilwoman, or Council President, um, I heard that they give you a souvenir manhole cover.
I, I don't know if I can carry it. I would just.
Okay, um, we have that offer, uh, for approval on consent, correct?
Uh, please, yes, please. Oh, yes.
Can we have that offer?
The personhole cover, yeah.
Personhole. Thank you. That was, that was that, that was a good one. Okay. All right. Are we ready to move on? Item number eight, request to extend contract with D'Angelo Brothers Incorporated. This two comes us from the Department of Public Works to perform water main taps and service connections along with emergency water and sewer repairs at various locations throughout the city in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually for a one-year extension. Council Resolution two sixty-four dash seventeen.
Who is this?
That is, that is me, me, once again. Thank you, uh, very much, um, Madam Chair. And hopefully my last, at least planned, uh, item for this evening. You may recall back in June of twenty twelve, council approved a three-year contract with the option for, uh, an extension for, uh, another two years with D'Angelo Brothers, um, for these city water taps, sewer service connections, and emergency sewer, water and sewer repairs. Then in twenty seventeen, council approved a four-year contract extension with D'Angelo, uh, still under the original terms of that twenty twelve contract without increasing their pricing. A little bit of background, D'Angelo's been serving the city since nineteen ninety-five. They performed a wide variety of water and sewer services. They have a vast knowledge of the city's water and sewer system, having worked with us on the system for so many years. Their response, response time in all conditions, situations, weather, and hours of the day, really helped the city and continued to provide a very high level of service to our residents. Their staff and leadership have always conducted work activities with the utmost level of professionalism that we know is much appreciated here by our DPW staff, as well as the residents that are affected by the work that they do. As we all know, through the COVID nineteen pandemic, it's really retactic on the pricing and availability of materials from things like auto parts to copper and plastic to wood and steel. Uh, the current volatility and high pricing of materials is very concerning to us when we're considering, uh, a long-term contract. So after months of discussing this, the situation with D'Angelo, we believe that a one-year extension at this time would be the best option. By maintaining extending that existing contract for one year without, um, a, an increase in prices, can provide a significant potential cost savings to the city. And the fact that D'Angelo Brothers is willing to agree to that one-year extension without raising their pricing to us, uh, really shows their dedication to the city and their willingness to continue to provide excellent service to the community. Based on their request to hold that current pricing, it would be our recommendation, uh, from the Department of Public Works that council proceed to um, accept the requests from D'Angelo Brothers to extend their current contract for one year from the date of approval of that extension uh, with an appropriation expenditure, uh, appropriation and expenditure not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars annually. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I know, uh, that everything you said in terms of D'Angelo Brothers being a great, uh, partner for the city, and I know that they're very reliable, and I, I know all the great things that you said are true. But it's, it's one of these things where we gotta ask questions sometimes. How long has it been since we went out for competitive bids on this contract? You, you mentioned in your explanation here, a lot of renewals, a lot of extensions. When's the last time this went out for, for a competitive bid?
The last competitive bid was in twenty twelve.
Okay. Um, so from the perspective of the DPW department, have you spot-checked the costs and the pricing with, uh, other contracts with other communities that they may be involved in? Are these prices still competitive? Are they advantageous to us to continue at these? I mean, have the rates raised elsewhere with competitor companies? Can you get into that a little bit?
Sure.
For the record, number one, and for our understanding?
Yep. Great, great question. I'm glad you asked it. So there are a couple of things we, we do regularly see, especially when we're looking at invoices from D'Angelo Brothers for their work, cost of labor, and materials compared to projects like, um, we mentioned in the last meeting, uh, with Seven Mile Extension, uh, water main project going in, or our DWRF water main projects. You know, looking at what unit prices we're seeing on open competitive bid process through what we're getting, uh, D'Angelo's long-term, uh, contract that we've had since twenty twelve. And there is a, a great difference. I don't know the exact percentage. But there, the twenty twelve contract is consistently lower and a better value for labor materials than what we're seeing in things that are currently bid out year in and year out for, um, larger water main replacement projects.
And that has been, uh, somewhat of a formalized evaluation process, or is this just, uh, like off-the-cuff kind of comparison?
It's, um, I wouldn't say it's a, um, annual formalized process, but it is something we kinda like to do, and, you know, myself as an engineer and somebody that pays attention to numbers, I'm checking that for things like, um, larger emergencies, like we're dealing with on Edgewood with the sewer replacement. We did, we did a comparison based on what their prices were, even for that emergency sewer work, compared to, um, what it would take if we, and, and the time constraints too, if we went out for bid. Um, and we realized that there is a large cost savings there.
Okay. I, I am asking these questions because, you know, that we would be going on nine to ten years here without going out for competitive bid. And that just, that is a while in terms of government contracts. So I appreciate the insight and, and the answers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, through the chair to Mr. Rushlow. I, I guess, you know, after I was looking through the packet, I'm kind of sharing the same concerns as Councilmember Jolly. There's really not a breakdown. Is there any chance that before the regular meeting, uh, coming up in two weeks and a couple of days, to have that original, uh, RFP that went out? You know, looking at, looking over everything, two thousand and twelve is a very long time, and obviously, maintaining that level of service, you have the comfortability, so I do appreciate that. It's just, you know, I, I guess my question to you would be is, we're doing a one-year extension. Do you plan to go out to bid next year?
Yep, that's a great question, uh, Councilperson McCullough. So that is exactly our plan, and, um, you know, rewind a few months back, um, earlier in the springtime, knowing that this contract was coming up, um, with the deadline here in, of July one, we were considering that. And with the continuing increased cost of materials and looking at trying to do a long-term, three, four, or five-year contract, our concern was we didn't wanna lock in those prices now. And, and the contractors too that are looking at these are saying, well, I don't know what the prices are gonna be two or three years from now. They could continue to skyrocket, or they may drop down. And if they drop down and we have a long-term contract with high prices, you know, then we're paying more than we should, um, for, for those products and those services. So, um, that, that was a big part of our consideration in, in doing this one-year extension. Certainly to your request, if we can provide, and happy to do so with the twenty twelve contract and the comparables there of what those, what those numbers are.
No, and thank you. I mean, honestly, when I look at that, if that's the intention, obviously, this year is a very interesting one with COVID and, and delays in pretty much every kind of material that is out there in the construction industry, I don't wanna hold you guys up. And if it's one year and then you guys are gonna create a, a formal bid process to send out on mitten.
That is the plan.
I, I would be behind that. Is, do we have a motion? I, I would be behind that. Does, do we have a motion on the table? Yet?
No, we do not.
Can I offer an approving for regular?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Was he done? You're all set? Okay. If I made him, Mr. Rushlow. Mr. Rushlow, have we ever had any kind of issues with D'Angelo Brothers? I mean, they've been timely, they've done various things, right?
Very, very much so, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Also, are we still giving, I don't mean to bring up the grid, but let me take you to yesteryear when we looked at different bidders and talked about how we gave a percentage on competitive bidding to the local person that was bidding. Are we still doing that as we look through our bid process? We're still, I forget what percentage we were doing, but.
Yeah, I believe you're right, Councilperson Toy. I would have to defer to the Law Department. I know that the ordinance does exist that allows for that, for construction projects. Myself, I don't also recall the exact percentage of how that works.
Yeah, I don't either, yeah. It's been a long time, Paul, but I know that was somewhat written in stone or in ordinance, or however we did, did it. Jim's remembering it. He's much younger than I, but anyhow, I just wondered, because some of these bids that we have and exist in the city today are because of their local connection to Livonia, if I'm correct on that.
Yep, I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, just to point that out, that's all.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, so we have that on the approving for the regular agenda, so we'll see you on Wednesday, September 8. Mr. Rushlow?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Number nine is a request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement. This comes to us from the Engineering Division from Hagerty Square LLC in conjunction with construction of a storm drainage system that provides adequate drainage for property developed on the east side of Hagerty Road, north of Seven Mile Road, in the southwest quarter of Section 6. Mr. Zalonsik?
Thank you, Madam President, for saving the best for last, her favorite topic, stormwater. We all love stormwater. So, as you know, Hagerty Square, we started about three years ago, the retail portion. We finally got the approved permit from Wayne County. They had to get revised based on the final installation of that stormwater management system. We're looking for the city council's approval finally to get your consent, so then go ahead and get executed and get it recorded at Wayne County for future maintenance purposes. Thank you.
Council?
Madam President?
Councilmember Jolly?
I will offer an approving for consent, but I also have a comment, not directly in regards to this, but maybe Mr. Terramina can listen to what I'm about to say, and Mr. Bernier. I think it's a beautiful development, Hagerty Square, but I can't help but notice every time I'm in the Target parking lot or the Costco parking lot, I, I was pretty sure we did not allow billboards in the city of Livonia, and there sure seems to be a very, very large sign on the side of that development, facing the Target and the Costco parking lot, that I can't wrap my head around being appropriate or authorized by our ordinances in the city of Livonia. It's the size of a billboard on the fence facing the Costco parking lot, to the point where it's, it bothers me, to be honest with you. So if the administration could look into that, I think that would be appropriate. And it's, it's not for lack of appreciation or hopeful, you know, success of that project, but I think if we're going to have rules, they need to apply to everybody. And I, I think it would take one quick drive through that parking lot to notice that something is not supposed to be happening in that particular way. Thank you.
All right, and that, and you, you offered that for?
For consent, but I appreciate the administration's insight in looking into that other issue.
Do you, do you want this, do you want this tied to that, or just separate? Or do you want to put this on the regular?
Let's put it on the regular, actually, that's a good idea.
All right, this is offered for the regular. At this time, we go back to the audience. Mr. Rushlow, would you like to communicate with the council on any, not the season's agenda? I did not think so. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, good night, Livonia. Thank you, Livonia TV.